Okay, one Mr. Hutton. I'm sorry. Mr. Maxon, you have a proposal to discuss with folks, please?
Thank you, Mayor. So, last time we met, we just briefly touched upon a proposal for contractual services model for financing Human Resources Management for the Davenport Civil Rights Commission. I was asked to put that in written form, to get that out. Got that out last week, sent a copy to City Council, Mayor, Director Lacy, and asked her to send a copy to her commissioners. So, hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at that and then be happy to answer any questions you might have about this.
Okay, folks, questions on this proposal?
Well, as I, what I read, Mr. Maxon, basically it's a proposal to give the Civil Rights Commission the freedom to manage their processes. I mean, is that the things that seem to have, you know, the challenges between, it's more of an independent model. Is that a fair thing to say?
I agree with that. I think the autonomy is in their court. They are in control of those management processes. The people that are providing those services report directly to the Director of Civil Rights and not through other city departments. So, that was kind of the intent, to give more autonomy to those, to that Civil Rights Commission.
Anybody else? Thoughts? Tom?
My questions would not be necessarily to RCA about the proposal, but I would like to hear from Civil Rights regarding the proposal.
Have you seen this? Have you guys seen this?
I guess the question that we would have is, why is the proposal being made in response to the questions that were asked? It seems as though, rather than addressing the concerns that were raised by the Commission, we're bringing forward a proposal. And in our work, this is what we would call like a derailed tactic. Rather than having the conversation that we're intending to have, we're changing the subject and talking about something else. So, I did print out the questions that were asked for administration that we didn't receive answers for, and that's in the packet that the Commission handed out. And then the second page of that packet is the proposal. And it's listing out a lot of things that we currently do anyway. And it seems like the proposal to change things over are basically things that I do to have someone else do it. These are things that are not performed by city staff currently. So, again, I'm just a bit perplexed by the proposal. And I think if the Commission would like to see the actual request addressed, and that is for the harassment to stop. Because it doesn't matter if I'm performing these tasks or if we have a contractor performing the task, city staff still does the next step. And the issue is, the next step is not happening for these tasks. So, yeah, I'm not sure how the proposal addresses the concerns that were raised.
And that seems to be the major concern here, is that the issues that were raised are not being addressed directly. Maybe in a roundabout way, but can't make a connection because, you know, we've raised some concerns. And with the proposal, the proposal, the proposal, but it doesn't, still doesn't address those things that were brought up. We did specify some specific items that we had issues with and some grievances, and some of those were addressed and some weren't. So, I mean, so our position is, hey, we would like to see those addressed or at least talked about or resolved or something.
Sorry, I apologize for the delay in getting maybe those responses on the administrative portion of that. I did send some information out mid-afternoon today. We had some debate internally about the answer to a couple of those questions, so we've taken those out and we've sent you the rest of that information moving forward. That was somewhere around 3:30, 3:45 or so that that was sent out, something like that. But I think, I think my response to your questions recognizes your concern. You've got my attention. We're trying to find a solution moving forward. The proposal I put on paper was not an attempt to derail anything. It was an attempt to, to give you more control in making those administrative decisions, getting those, that administrative information that you need to function in a timely fashion and kind of avoid maybe the capacity issues that some of our other departments might have at the moment, which may be leading to some of those delays. So, my thought was to put that control back into your court over those processes and hopefully put you in a position to move forward a little more expeditiously than what we have been in the past.
That was a good attempt, but still, and kudos for the effort. That was a great effort, but still there's a gap from, you know, what was tabled and getting to this point. Because this point does answer a lot of, a lot of issues, questions, put stuff in place, but it still doesn't address those specific concerns that were sent forth.
I think...
And the only thing I want to pick back is, is so to give her the authority to do the job that she's told to do, so did we miss the part of when they have to finalize and do the things that she's in need of, that she's worked on, and that's still going to be a hurdle? So, where are we at with that? So, it's okay to say, this is what you can do, but then now to hurry up and wait.
I'm not sure I fully understand the situation that you're talking about with this.
Do we have page two here?
Of my proposal? Yeah.
And so, the vast majority of the things on the first page, these are things that I already do. These are not things that are, these are not tasks that are performed. And we all talked at the last meeting that HR doesn't have authority to decide how our positions are classified with the pay, but here you have it on the list. And this is something that your HR director has lied to EEOC and said that I do, or the Commission does. Your former city attorney lied to EEOC and said that I do it. This is a part of my lawsuit, is that HR staff is usurping the Commission's authority. And the response, the city's response to my lawsuit says that I have this authority, the Commission has this authority. But here you have it on the list, showing that even though we have this legal authority, we don't get to exercise that authority because your staff is usurping our authority. So, they're violating the city's ordinances. So, the Commission was asking for the city staff to stop violating the ordinances, stop usurping our authority. So, and to bring forward this list of things that HR doesn't currently do, I am not sure how that addresses those concerns because they don't do these, most of these things now. We do those. You go to the next page for the things that finance does, these are things that we do. There's three things on the list that finance does. And I also admittedly take issue to saying, you know, there's a dissatisfaction expressed by the Director and the Commission. It's not an issue of being dissatisfied, it's that your staff is not doing things and they are usurping our authority. Us asking for compliance with the law is not an expression of dissatisfaction, is asking for, based by bare minimum. I mean, I don't, I'm, this is frustrating to keep coming back and having the same conversations and to learn that I received apparently an email at 3:45 that has the answers to some of these questions, which were supposed to be answered on May 9th, and I would have received it at 3:45 on June 3rd. That's unacceptable. I mean, these are the delays that we're referring to.
So, on page four, we're listed service providers and the three positions. You're saying you don't need those, you don't want those, but he's offering for you to have those positions. Is that what you're saying? That you don't need them, don't want them, what?
Is that what you heard?
Page four. "I'm asking."
No, I'm asking you, is that what you heard?
"I'm asking you if you agree that these could be good positions and do you want those?" He's proposing, my understanding, maybe I'm wrong, tell me if I'm wrong, he's proposing these positions, go to see if it's right.
So, this is where I'm upset, where you guys act like we're a tag team. This is where I become a tag team. Because if that's what you heard out of her mouth...
I didn't say that.
Well, how do we jump for, she had concerns and you instantly are saying, so are you saying you don't want this?
I don't know. I'm asking. Would you be interested in having these to help with this issue? If you do, yes. If no, yes. I mean, I'm not understanding.
Clearly.
Okay. Then explain it.
I don't even work in civil rights and I see it.
Okay.
So, that's...
I'm just, he's, he's offering positions to help with some of the issue.
I understand that, but that's, that's not, that's not where she was at at the moment.
Okay.
I guess I...
Go ahead, Ms. Newton. Sorry.
No, no, you're good. I didn't want to cut you off, I apologize. Okay, so I guess my first question would be, looking at the handout provided by Civil Rights, obviously it nears the memorandum provided by RCA in regards to what the current service model is and what Human Resources Department is providing.
Apologize, Jasmine, where are you at?
Page, page one.
Of the memorandum?
Of the annotated one. It's so...
This?
Flip that, flip that over.
This?
Yes. So, that's the annotated version of Doug's demo.
So, if I understand correctly, and please at any point try to jump in, if I understand correctly, on the list of things that Human Resources is currently providing, what is highlighted here, Civil Rights is indicating, that's not the case. So, I'm confused then, why are these listed as things that Human Resources provided to Civil Rights and as part of this proposal if it's something that Civil Rights is already doing?
I don't, I guess we don't have agreement on what those services are.
I mean, I think it's important to understand...
Right.
...what they're doing as in Civil Rights, what HR's doing so that we can figure out a solution. I am all for, let's come to a solution, which is why I keep pressing like, we're not going to leave the table proverbially until we find a solution. But I do think like, we need to be on the same page, and I'm hearing two completely different things. And that in itself, I see as an issue. Because it should be crystal clear, this is what we're currently doing and we're saying that Civil Rights should do, and in light of them doing it, here's the proposal. But I'm hearing, nope, we're already doing that, so that's, I'm, I think, more confused today than I was at the last meeting.
Right. And I'm sorry I didn't use the words that you guys understood, but that's, in a nutshell, why I was like, how do we go from this to you asking the question that you asked? So, thank you.
So, I'm sorry to jump in. So, I, maybe I'm one that I need specific examples. So, Director Lacy, after our last meeting, you had reached out, sent an email to Alderman Reiner tonight. One of the specific examples you had mentioned is, you've been trying to hire two positions over this last calendar year, correct? And that has not been able to occur because, again, why? In your opinion, if you don't mind me asking.
So, we have, the salary is really low, and so people don't want to take the position if they have the credentials that position requires at that salary. So, we had two positions that were supposed to be posted, they were approved, went through the process. One person was hired, they didn't even stay a month. The second position was taken down. I have no idea why. No one can explain why, other than, oops, it was an accident. Well, why do these accidents keep occurring with Civil Rights? I mean, at that, at that point, it appears intentional. So, I submitted the salary assessment request. Instead of doing the salary assessment request, which is, if you go past the proposal, there is a sheet that's charted, landscape, we requested a salary assessment for the Civil Rights investigator and the specialist. Instead, we got an assessment for the specialist and the investigations manager. Why? That doesn't make sense. I mean, I don't understand. The request is very clear that we're seeking a salary assessment for these two positions and then you do a different position.
So, that's a pretty specific example. I mean, do we have, is there a reply to that? I mean, is there a reply to that, or?
We put together a timeline. She's absolutely correct that the request was not completely fulfilled. The, there was a request in December, I believe, to the Attorney Department, and there was another one made to interview in February. We've got some data from the HR department for, I believe it was the HR, not the HR, Civil Rights Specialist, if I'm not mistaken, as well as Investigations Manager, which they did not request. That was from the market data, that was from their own internal evaluation of that. Civil Rights Investigator position, there was a little bit of concern from HR about the job description being too broad and being able to compare that. Their suggestion was to take another look at the job description and then we would go back out to the market and evaluate that. That was not completed. We, Human Rights did not, Human Rights was not negligent in any way. Civil Rights was not negligent in any way. We were, the city was negligent in getting that. So, we provided a partial response to that request. We did not, we did not provide the full response to that request.
I would say that it was not a partial response. If I give two job descriptions and then I have already gone through and done the research to find comparable job descriptions, they didn't even have to do it. I provided that with the request. They went and compared it to the wrong positions. That to me, it feels intentional. If I have given you a list of the positions that are comparable and then you go and say, I'm going to compare it to totally different ones. Their investigator is kind of like an entry level, and then the specialist is the higher level investigator.
Changing it without collaborating with the originator. I mean, you didn't have the authority to do that in the first place, but then you decided to change it and not go back to the originator to even collaborate and say, is it okay? Is this comparable? Will this suffice for the, for the position? You know, and that's, waiting for answers.
That, that would be my question. Why isn't anybody talking to her? She's the Director of Civil Rights, she's the one that has to hire, she's the one that is going to be the Director. If she's giving this information, why is it being changed? Why are we...
I'll say something too. We would never do this to Nicole Gleason. We wouldn't do this to Sam Love.
At least you have authority to do it with them. They only have authority to do it with the Commission.
They would.
But why isn't that communication? Why isn't anybody talking to her?
Because they're giving me the silent treatment in retaliation for me complaining about discrimination. That's why. And apparently it's acceptable.
It's not acceptable.
Follow on Alderman Jordan's questions, because I agree. I'm very much, give me an example, so I can understand the issue and then I can see how we're going to fix it. So, I heard there was two positions, one was hired and quit right away, the second was taken down without explanation. Why?
That was, that was human error. So, there were two positions, one was filled, when they took down that position, they took down the second one at the same time.
And has that been corrected as we sit here today?
There is, there was a posting for a Civil Rights Specialist that, I think that was in March that was made. There's over 40 applications that are associated with that position. So, I, I think that's been addressed at this point, but I have not heard otherwise.
Has it been addressed at this point, Director Lacy?
We can't hire because we don't know what the salary is. So, I, how can I hire someone if I don't have a set salary?
But again, aren't you supposed to set this? I mean, isn't that really the direct, shouldn't that be the directive of the Civil Rights? I mean...
That's what we're asking council to direct your staff to do, is we have already put forward a salary, they have changed it and lowered it.
So, can't be...
These are both positions that are covered by a union agreement.
Okay.
I don't, who would argue for any of their positions to be paid less? So, that doesn't, I mean, that seems like an arbitrary barrier. I think if the, and it should have been addressed in negotiations because we asked for it to be. So, again, this is still city staff doing these things, and it doesn't make sense.
So, then I, I apologize. I just need clarification because I'm a little lost. And so, so I've, I've always been under the impression, yep, Civil Rights Commission gets to set this out, and here's your budget, right? Here's your, here's your bucket of money, within that, you spend it how you so choose, right, to pay your people to do the things that you need to do. But there, are there, are there union positions that dictate that, okay, me as a specialist, I can only, those are bargain positions?
It has a salary range.
It's based on the way HR set them. That's the issue.
Based on what?
The way that HR has set them.
It's based on a collective bargaining agreement.
It's based on the way HR has set them.
Both positions are covered by collective bargaining.
The same positions are union positions in other cities and they pay more. The same collective bargaining. So, I would say it's the city of Davenport's HR staff that has lowered the salary.
How does that conflict with the code, though, in terms of the Civil Rights Commission having the autonomy to make those decisions themselves?
I would have to ask the city attorney for a...
I guess that would be my concern.
So, sorry. And I wasn't using examples because I keep getting targeted, but I can give you guys examples as well. And I'm sorry that, that's one or two times that I've said it, but reimbursement, ask her about sometimes how she gets treated on her reimbursement on the cards that the city has issued and that she's done the stuff that the city, in the parameters of what we're supposed to do on the city card, but it's questioning to try to get her reimbursement or get these cards paid because they'll say it was personal. So, I'm telling you, if y'all want examples, I'll give examples, but it's just like, I'm like Alderwoman Newton, I'm tired of this conversation. What is this conversation? It's a toilet bowl of, we're swishing around. The same information is going around and around in the toilet bowl. You guys hear what you hear, I hear both sides, and I don't want to get colorful, as you guys would say, because it's just frustrating to know that you guys are treating Civil Rights like it's a black and white issue. Handicapped, people of color, women, do you know how many people have benefited from Civil Rights? And you guys sit here as smug as if this is something that only benefits our community. Do you know how many times I am on the front line because I am also part of the NAACP? So, I have to sit and listen to these stories, and I don't want to refer people to Civil Rights because I know the stuff that they have to go through to actually try to help and protect somebody, and it could be a heterosexual white woman. But guess what? I don't refer them because I don't feel comfortable on the level of the city with dealing with Civil Rights issues right now because of this. So, it's just interesting to me that if you guys need examples, I have them. But the only reason I have these examples is because I'm at these meetings. I never would have known this stuff originally, never, never. But it's a constant. But why do you need a tip for a tack so you can say, well, I don't understand and I don't know what? Why? Why? Why does Alderwoman Newton and Alderman Jordan need to hear? I hear you guys that you need it, but I'm saying, why? Because all it does for me is, it amps me up. I don't know what it does for her because she lives it, but it amps me up because I'm sitting there going like, what? Why? Because when we go do these things, nobody's questioning us. I took that card to DC and, Lord, I got a scooter, I did all kind of crazy stuff. Nobody said anything to me.
Well, now I'm gonna...
Well, because I couldn't walk. But I'm just saying, it's interesting to me that not one person said anything to me and I was all over DC. And men knows DC. DC is a high crime rate area. Let one person get that card information, I could have had racked up stuff and I'd be like, what you talking about? Because I wouldn't know. But I'm just saying, it's interesting that when she goes on to the community to do community stuff, the questions that she gets asked for all the events and stuff that Cody used to go to, don't get me started. But I'm just saying, why do we need these examples? Why? You have enough laid out in front of you. Why do we need more examples? And I'm not discouraging you guys, I'm just saying, it's exhausting. Dude, I'm telling you, it's exhausting to have to keep reliving and rehashing information so I can bring other people up to speed and you guys have access to it. Don't get me started. There was information that 324, y'all had it, we didn't. So, I'm just thinking, it's interesting that y'all keep needing this stuff, rehash, rehash, rehash. Why? What are we going to do with it? Are we going to do anything with it? Are we going to move forward with it? Are we going to just stick to this proposal?
The reason, Alderman Kelly, I'm asking...
No, no, I'm not discrediting you.
No, no, I know. I just, I just want to make it clear. I'm asking for those specifics and asking from Director Lacy so that they can be addressed right now on the spot.
For sure.
If she is telling me that she can't hire two because the salaries she has set have not been changed, then my question becomes, why? Why can't it be done? Why are we even here today having this discussion if it's been ongoing? And if there's a, an answer as to it legally can't be done or something like that, then that's what I need to know as an elected official. If it's, though, we need to take care of it, that's also what I need to know because from my understanding, she should be setting that, not, not the city of Davenport. And that's what I have been told from previous administration directly. So, if that's not correct, then I need to know that today before we leave, and I need to know what it's going to take for her to get those, because I mean, we're here to solve a problem, to get those posted so she can hire for those positions. That's why I'm asking specifics.
I believe your statement you just made is correct, that she has that authority. So, I've had that discussion with Sam. I think we're on the same page with that. Let me just respond to you, Alderman Kelly, with, with two points. Number one, as I've gone through and reviewed all of the information provided by Director Lacy, and I've gone through and I've looked and researched all of this stuff, I have concerns about our responsiveness and about our accuracy in what we have provided. I think there's significant shortcomings in the city's services that we have provided to Civil Rights.
Are we addressing those?
We're trying to. So, that's my second point is, I am all about trying to fix this and move forward to put them in a position to succeed. I'm trying to find out, how do we do that without going through and, and upheaving this whole process internally here to make sure that you get the timely information that you need, that you need to operate?
And I would say, if you have gone through and looked at the stuff and see that they are valid concerns, why then on page two do you say that it's an issue with me being dissatisfied versus it's an issue with staff not doing what has been asked and not performing to the standard that they should? Because that's where the blame should be. The way that this is worded, it's, it is as a jab to me and the Commission that we're complaining about nothing versus we're raising valid concerns and they're being ignored and we keep raising them and then we're treated as though we're complaining about nothing. Where the proposal to say that you all are gonna, that you all are doing purchasing for the Commission, the city's code, which is the page right before the landscape page, directly says that the city doesn't do purchasing for the Commission. Why are we, I mean, this is, the city staff should know what the code says that refers to their department. This is a part of the issue, and I keep reiterating, you don't have authority to do this, this is not what the code says. And then I'm getting pushed back as if I'm being persnickety, but I'm, this is what the code says.
So, that's why it seems to me that the service, the proposed service model is one that separates the Civil Rights Commission, the powers to do these things and disentangle its work, and it would seem that it would more closely follow the code if it was, it was, if you were more independent of these, of some of these other departments and functions.
Well, we already are. They are not doing these things. Look at the proposal for the contractor providing services.
But you're, but you're, it, what I, and I'm, what I'm wondering is, it, it feels very entangled.
No. If you look at our page two...
Right.
The ones that are highlighted are things that we already do. These are the things that are being proposed for a contractor to do. We're doing them, not city staff. So, what, what would the proposal do? It's not taking city staff out of it, it's taking us out of it.
But it would, it would replace, there is a piece in these where city snacks, excuse me, I'm sorry, my nose is stuck, I can't talk. City staff is entangled and this, this proposal, but, but the new proposal...
Yes, under the proposal.
Should allow you to have your own, your own HR resources, your own financial resources. So, they would be, that's who, I'm sorry, that's who you would be working with, right?
Well, let me tell you what my answer to what you're saying is, so if she's already having trouble hiring staff members, now you're saying, I, I, I hear this proposal, I see this proposal, but so if you're having trouble hiring staff members and paying staff members... this proposal, but so if you're having trouble hiring staff members and paying staff members, you know this is a third salary, right? Yes or no?
Yes, and there's a proposal of finding...
Okay, but no, I'm just, I'm trying to get to that point that this is a third salary. So with that being said, now there's, I can't even get the two positions I have, but let me go ahead and guarantee there's one position. Make it make sense. Let's get it all in a line first and foremost, you know what I'm saying? So I'm sorry that I keep cutting you off, but make that make sense, that we're gonna guarantee this position, but I can't get the two that I actually need to run my department. Go down, I'm sorry.
I just want to clarify, the things, the actual services that are being proposed to be done by the contractor are things that I do. These are not things that city staff does. So the only thing that's being proposed is for it to keep being the same way that it is because the things where we're having the barriers are the things that they're proposing they're gonna continue to do.
But what if they had no hands on it? What if they had, what if, what if...
What if they did their jobs?
Well, but I'm asking, but I'm asking, what if there were, as the library functions independently?
I'm not understanding why there are others to facilitate them engaging in harassment instead of directing them to stop it and do their jobs. Why are we bending to the will of foolishness? They should just stop it and do their jobs. They should just stop interfering with our work. If they don't have authority to do these things, they should not be doing it, period. This doesn't make sense. Why would the council even be willing to throw $100,000 at foolishness? I mean, this doesn't make sense. I would prefer to hire another investigator with $100,000 than pay for somebody to do services that I'm doing. I'm already being paid to do it.
So the question that Alderman began to ask, that disentanglement, so last time we got together, we talked, maybe two times ago we got together, we talked about the certification from our finance department for your HUD spending or something of that nature. If we were to get out of that equation, you would have somebody within your own office be able to sign that certification and you wouldn't have to have that discussion with the finance director or an accountant in the finance department about certifying those expenses. That's what we're trying to do is to get our hands out of what you're trying to accomplish and empower you to get, streamline this and get this done a little quicker and more effectively.
I would think that finance staff knows whether or not they've co-mingled funds and that should be a really easy turnaround.
We can tell you what's budgeted, we can't tell you what's spent.
It's not about telling what's spent. HUD is already monitoring what we're spending because we have to send them the receipt to them. Well, the only thing that we've asked them to certify is that they are not co-mingling the funds, that they have control over. They are physically drawing down the funds, physically putting them in an account. HUD wants to make sure that those aren't co-mingled with other funds. We have no idea what happens with it because we don't have any physical control over a bank account. But finance staff does, so they should be able to say, this has not been co-mingled with other funds. That should not be something that's difficult for them to do. But again, rather than addressing the issues that have been brought forward, we're derailing the conversation and saying, hey, well, why don't we talk about a proposal? Instead of, if you had a proposal, you could bring it up at any time, but we should address the actual elephant in the room, which was the concerns that were raised. And rather than addressing those, we're talking about something else. And the proposal as it stands is proposing that I stop doing the things that I'm doing under the premise that city staff is doing it and then we have, we hire somebody else to do it. And for us to create our own UEI, like, I don't even know what that does because the city loves to brag about their certified departments. We are a certified department. We are certified through HUD and EEOC, recognized by Congress. So if we get a new tax ID number, does that change it? Do we have to go through the certification process again? Who knows? Because no one's done any research on any of this. I mean, this is just frustrating just from my perspective because it doesn't make sense.
I think we share in the frustration. We did have some concerns about, about some of the issues that you pointed out, but we're really interested in trying to find a path forward for success for you and that was my attempt behind this proposal. So there was nothing nefarious there, it was not an attempt to derail, it was an attempt to try to get you in a successful position.
Well, I think, I think that we just need to follow our own ordinances.
We can do that, it's gonna be a long term, it's gonna be a process to understand, make sure that we've got effective communication so we understand what they need and they understand the terminology that we use and that we can make these improvements moving forward. We can certainly do that.
If I may interject for just a minute, there's been a lot of discussion about the fixing of compensation and there was a discussion about the librarian and things like that. So I just, and they're a similarly situated commission. So just to get a look at the language of the two ordinances, within the library ordinance, there's very specific language that talks about the librarian who would be basically the director of the library system, has the ability to engage in the proper management of libraries, is employee's assistant, and it says specifically to fix their compensation. So it says that language within the library statute. When I look at the civil rights statute, and this is, I think what's frustrating is when we, as we discussed for over an hour, when we have, prior to this meeting, when we have disagreements or ambiguities within our own documents, when I look at the civil rights statute, I see under the powers and duties of the director there, the power and duty to administer the budget of the commission. Part of the budget of the commission is staff salaries, but if you, if I was to make an argument that our lovely judiciary would make, the fact that the city in one said, in one ordinance said fix compensation and another one did not say those specific words, they'd say that, they've come down on both sides of that. They recently did it in sidewalks where they put some language in a sidewalk, part of a sidewalk statute and another part they didn't. And so they clarified that by saying, you left it out here, it must have been intentional. I don't want to take that interpretation, but I think it's possible that others in the past have. If you were to ask me what my opinion is today, as we said, the administration of the budget, the budget of which includes the salaries of the employees, would be under her purview and we should facilitate that. I don't think that's been the direction prior administrations have necessarily given.
I will say that was the direction with the previous, these two previous interims and there was a meeting that I was present for with civil rights. The mayor was at that meeting, we had it upstairs and the questions were asked regarding whether or not she sets her own salaries for those positions and the answer was that yes, that was her purview to do. And that was when we had interim administrator...
And I would point out, if you turn the page to the document written by your HR director, he directly says that the commission sets the salary for commission employees. So either she was lying there or that's not a true statement. I mean, one of the two is correct. And this is my frustration because we're being told two opposite things and then Latrice is the one complaining about nothing. She directly says the commission, this is last year, the commission sets the salaries. But then they are setting the salaries as shown on page one of this memorandum. And everybody around this table agrees that they don't have authority to set the salaries for an independent agency. It doesn't make sense. You go to the next page, it says it again, it's highlighted. Why is there no disciplinary action for your staff lying to a regulatory entity? How is this not harassment? You're accusing a lawyer of engaging in civil rights violations, wage discrimination. You go to the next page, these are our vouchers for HUD. If you go to box eight, there's a number there that starts with FF. After the K, that number is the year, 24, so that's the year that we received it. So we would have received this money in September, October 2024. Look at the date that the request was made to draw the funding down, box 14. Look at each one. Why are these drawn down so late?
I believe Basha has documentation from somebody on your staff on the dates on when to draw that down. So I think we've got that documentation.
We send over a memo every year to say, this is what we've received, because we didn't even realize that finance staff can see something. We don't have access to this system. So we didn't realize that they could see how much money was received. So we draft up a memo explaining what was received and we send over the document that we received from HUD and we send that over to them. So even where I included one of the memos, we see when the memo was sent and then we look at the next page of when the money was drawn down. This has been an ongoing thing and this is why the funding is wrong in the system because they're drawing it down so late. The last page, that one was received in 2021 and it was drawn down in 2023.
Maybe we could take a different tact here. What is the most priority, highest priority for you moving forward? Is to get those two positions filled? Is that what that is? Sorry?
It's for the harassment to stop. I don't think what we're asking for is a big hurdle for your staff to stop blocking
Nothing new is coming out here. We pretty much laid out our concerns and to shorten it up, that's what we're looking to get a response to. And some of that has not been addressed still, so this is nothing new.
Okay. Try to regroup and we'll try to get a game plan together before we move on.
So we've had three meetings to regroup, is what you're saying?
Well, I put a plan on the table for you to review.
We understand that and I get that.
Tried to regroup through that, that got shot down, so we need to take a different approach here.
I think there were questions on the plan though. I specifically wanted to know whether or not the stuff that she had highlighted as things that she is already doing that was being proposed as if staff is doing, whether or not that is correct. Like, I would want to know that.
Right.
To me, that's an important fact.
Right.
So and I know you said you didn't have the answer to that at this point in time, but I mean, that's kind of an issue.
We would like to provide answers to that from our perspective.
Oh, absolutely.
Right. And so to say it was shot down, you weren't shot down. It's just that we've kicked this can down the road and here we are again, you're saying, let's regroup. Regroup for what though? And then when we, I didn't get whatever you sent at 3:45. Never did, I was at a doctor's appointment, I missed it. Why are we getting information at 3:45 for a 5 o'clock meeting?
We were still working on what that content was.
And I get that. I get it, but if we originally said that all this information was gonna be to us on May 9th so we can have questions, so I'm really confused of how this is, we're continuing to slowly kick this can down the road and it's interesting to me, I don't want to say Alderwoman Newton, but I feel like me and Alderwoman Newton and Ms. Burkholder were asking the question, people have questions. We're just tired of this can being kicked down the road and I am not, I don't gain anything from helping out civil rights. I gain the fact that somebody voted me in this position, I'm supposed to be out in the streets and I'm supposed to be helping people and I'm helping everybody. So with that being said, I know what the civil rights division is going through because some of the stuff that I deal with on a daily basis is ridiculous. I see CJ on an email the other day because I was tired. I want the mayor, there he is, because I'm just like, come on now, I can't please everybody, but at least I'm giving the effort of trying to be out here and listen and trying to please. This whole table right here, what's this? I feel like I'm in a therapy session where the therapist is online shopping and ain't listening to what I'm saying. So it's, I, it's, what's the next step for?
Well, go ahead.
Go ahead, Rick, you haven't said, but I'm just, I seriously, I want to know what the next step is for.
Seems to me you need two positions, right? You've been trying to hire two positions for a long time.
We don't even have it in the budget anymore because we had to reorganize to stop someone from quitting because of this.
Right, right.
So we only have one now.
Okay. How do we get there? How do we get there that...
They could let the salary be set so that then we could hire someone.
That seems like a pretty easy answer to me, but maybe I missed something.
And then you said regroup. If it were me, if I were in your shoes, I would be having conversations with this person and asking, what can we do? How can we, how can we get here instead of all of us asking? This is a first-person conversation to get the groundwork going.
It's already been laid out. I mean, the issues are there, so you just need to sit down and address the issues. I mean, that's, to me, and I keep saying it's simple because I don't get it. I mean, the issues are here, I got a proposal. A proposal does not address the issue, so now we gotta make the proposal address the issues that have been laid out. And to me, that seems to be simple. I'm a simple guy, I'm like you. I need clarification, I like to ask questions, you know, but it's just issues, response, they should, they should match.
And if your staff told you they did this, you should have a concern with that. I shouldn't be the only one annoyed with your staff telling you they're doing stuff that they absolutely are not doing.
Back to Alderman Dunn's point where he was like, okay, that that sounds simple. I asked, can that be done? Because I want to know if there is a legal reason why that can't be done where she is setting her salary.
Hers are...
Oh, I mean, sorry, for her.
Close the position with the set salary ban and hire somebody. Can we do that? I mean, is it...
Can I just interject? And I don't necessarily have the answer to this, but when I, when I read through the code, the Civil Rights Commission code says in it that the employees of the commission are subject to the administrative policies of the city. When it comes to this fixing job or salary, job classifications and provisions governing it are subject to the collective bargaining agreement. So it, the only step, I guess, one of the preventative steps that I see is if, for whatever reason, that the salary she would like to set is outside the collective bargaining agreement so that it can't be done. I don't know the answer to that, but it would seem that that administrative policy could stand in the way.
So you can research and make sure you get that right.
Well, with the research, I would also want to know if the administrative policies even stand because they weren't voted by council. Sorry, but another legal question.
The commission ordinance actually says the commission staff will be entitled to receive the same fringe benefits, follow the same administrative procedures of city employees and will be entitled to receive all due process procedures, not inconsistent with prevailing local, state and federal law available to other employees and where they're situated. So that's very clearly saying that the commission staff will be entitled to follow those policies to make sure that we don't set a lower standard than what the city standards are. That doesn't necessarily mean that they have to follow those policies. We have tried to do anything that deviates from city policies, but that's not what the language of the ordinance is. I mean, as an independent agency, the commission has authority to adopt policies relating to staff.
I would, I would, I would not necessarily agree with all of that, however...
I think that you don't understand how independent agencies work. I think that you don't understand how independent agencies work because the city sued regarding the commission and the Supreme Court ruled that the commission operates without depending on any other city department. And so if the city administrator's office is a department pursuant to the city's ordinance, that would mean that they don't have authority to set the standards for us because this is what the Supreme Court has ruled, these other departments. The ordinance very clearly says that the commission is going to be operating with the policies of council, not city staff. There is this continuing to usurp the authority of the council, of the commission, of me. And then we talk in circles and then we don't get a clear answer on anything.
So just, so I can finish my thought. I don't necessarily disagree. I mean, I don't necessarily agree. I think there is ambiguity on the way this thing, the statute is worded that needs to be cleared. If it is council's intent that, that the policies or the administrative policies that govern this other city departments are, should be separate and apart from the policies that govern, the administrative policies that govern the civil rights employees. I, I'm okay with that. I just think the way this is worded here, it says they'll receive the same fringe benefits, comma, follow the same administrative policies as city employees, and, although I would add an Oxford comma here, and will be entitled to receive all due process procedures not inconsistent with prevailing local, state, and federal law. I think that's a list. The second item on the list is follow the same administrative procedures as city employees. So if, if we're talking about job classification and salary setting in that avenue, as I said before, I don't have the answers we said here today, but can, we can work towards the answer. And I, and I honestly want to work with Ms. Lacy towards this answer because I want her to be able to set the salary. So how do we get that done if we feel like the CBA stands in the way?
Everybody has said that we already have that authority. So obviously, a policy can't override the ordinance. So if the city's ordinance says that I have authority to administer the budget, that would mean that I have authority to set the salaries. Whatever your policy says, it doesn't override the ordinance.
But at the same time.
Because the ordinance is what's passed by the council and the council decides, not city staff.
But at the same time, the ordinance also says follow all city policies. It's an ordinance that says that part, so we have a disagreement and we want to work through it to get to the resolution.
Sam, if you believe that a policy overrides an ordinance, I don't know what to say. That's obviously not true. Why would the city council allow staff to draft something that contradicts something that it has approved? That doesn't make sense. The city council is the policymaking body. They make the decision. So they passed an ordinance that allows staff to draft a policy that overrides their ordinance?
I would tend to agree that that's not something they should do.
That's not something they can do. It would not make sense. It would be, if they contradict the ordinance governs.
And I, and I say we have a disagreement between two ordinances and that's why I'm saying we need to.
That's not a disagreement between two ordinances. If, if a policy drafted by staff contradicts the ordinance, then the ordinance governs.
Well, I think we still have the question of whether or not the policy stands when it wasn't passed by council in the first place.
It doesn't because anything relating to salaries is supposed to be done through the council's policy directive.
And so I have to jump in here, too. So I know you guys don't like my colorful words, but let me tell you what throws me off is when I hear you say, I'm not okay with that or I'm okay with that. Okay, so I, I'm confused. Is it your judgment call? Because our words, because you guys want to always remember mine. So just simple things always, I remember what some people say to me. So when you're, I'm not okay with that. Okay, what does that mean? When we're sitting here and us that aren't legal eagles can pick up and follow what's going on because of, well, I said that aren't.
Me, I'm not.
No, but I'm just saying. So what I'm saying, but if we can pick up what Alderman Newton is saying and Alder, and what Director Lacy is saying, if I can pick that up and then I'm watching this tennis match, what's the tennis match for? So I'm just saying it's interesting to me that I ain't gonna never change. So y'all can, I'm gonna be who I am because I sit here and I watch stuff like this and it's disheartening to me that it's not okay with you. What, I, you know, I mean, if I have to watch my words, and I know that's not a harsh word, but it just makes me wonder, do I need your permission? Because we know what to do and not to do to get sued as individuals in the city. But the way you just put that down made me think my dad was sitting at the table telling me, no, you can't do that because I'm not okay with that. That's not cool. I may be the only person that thinks like that, but I always wonder when y'all are sitting up listening to my words and I haven't given examples because I don't want to go down that rabbit hole. But now I, I, I guess I'm gonna be the example giver, so we don't go quick to Cornet on me because, no offense, I, I just, I, ugh. I, I don't ever want to hear why you did what you did because it's already laid out there. I don't want to hear a backhanded apology of like, I'm sorry that we did that. I don't want to hear that because we're already here. We are on our third meeting. The first meeting, we talked about $150,000, then evidently evaporated like water on the concrete. I don't know what happened to that. And then now we're sitting here, we have this proposal, that this proposal didn't address a lot of things and we want to apologize for the shortcomings of the staff. But once again, I, who am I? I'm nobody. But it's interesting to me that we, the staff can keep kicking things down the, I don't want to keep giving examples because I can, but it just frustrates me that, what, what are these meetings for? Because I don't, can't guarantee I'll be on the fourth one because it's just interesting to me that we're still having the same conversation. And I probably, I'm sure you guys, that's what you want, but I'm just saying, it's interesting to have a conversation where you, it's shot down, you jumped to a whole completely different conclusion. We are sitting here saying, okay, can we just talk about this? We're not demanding anything. We're just saying, can we talk about this? Because if we talk about this, then we can move on. But if we're not willing to talk about it, guess what? Guess what? And y'all don't want me to give examples of what some of my counterparts have said to me because this is why I get real colorful. The shit that people have said to me makes me go, we can't move on because this is how you guys feel. So if this is how you guys feel, we'll never move on. You know what I'm saying? Y'all don't want them examples because that's what you get when you have private meetings. You get the true people of the people that I sit next to and they, you guys have to realize, I'm gay, gay, black, large, male. So some of the things that you guys say to me, very rude and offensive, and I have to take it on the chin. Why? Because you want me to be a bigger person. And I think that's BS sometimes, but guess what? 90% of the time, I take it on the chin. But you guys get to see that 10% where I gotta let it go. Because it doesn't make any sense to me. And you'll never know. You will never know. You'll never know what it's like to almost lose your house. You will never know what it's like to almost die of COVID, being in a hospital for three months and your dad dies on your third day of being there. You will never know. I'm not saying that we don't have losses and we don't have things, but I'm just saying, isn't it interesting that we come together as a body to talk about things, but we want to hold on to our beliefs? We want to hold on to what we believe in. We want to hold on to our religions. We want to hold on that the people that are here are helping us when they're really, yeah, they're helping. But have you ever seen, there's a TikTok where somebody does it 100%, somebody does it 50%, and then somebody does it like 10%? We have some employees that are doing 10% of the work because they're doing what they need to do so they can stay employed, but we're in this position right here. This position that we're in right here, I'm tired of this conversation. I'm telling you, I don't know if I can make a fourth meeting because what are we talking about? And we're not talking about changes. And I mean on a city staff level. Dude, don't even, do me the favor that they did me with all that other stuff. Alderman Kelly has it copied on this email. Don't send it to me because we're not talking about changes and because it's interesting that this proposal is good. But to have to wait on the flip side, and that's why I gave you the example of, look at some of her reimbursements of how they're questioning when she spends the money, look at that stuff and you'll see what I'm talking about if you guys want some examples from me. If I'm doing this in the name of the city, I didn't go out and buy a new car. I'm not sitting outside with a car in the parking lot. I need that to drive around for the city of Davenport. You know what I'm saying? So it's, it's different things to see granola bars and things like that that are bought that are took to an event and you guys are questioning it. And I just sit there and go, wow, really? So it's just interesting to me, this conversation over. You know, but I'm just saying, over and over. So let's talk about some resolutions. Let's not talk about proposals anymore because we get the proposals. We get it. I know. I get it, but I'm just saying, where's that at?
So here's my request. If Director Lacy is amenable to this, I would like to continue this discussion about our immediate next steps with her, myself, Sam, so we can put together some concrete things on paper, how we're going to move forward.
Can, can we, can we agree that there are some issues that have not been addressed? The proposal addressed some things. There are some gaps, some shortcomings. Everybody agrees that the concerns are valid. I think, I think we all came to that, that consensus that the concerns were valid and that there's going to be a discussion to address those things and it will be conducted with Director Lacy. I, I mean, we need to kind of summarize. There were some questions on the table. Alderman Newton had some and I think, did you have some questions also that need to be answered? And so, I mean, we just need to summarize and, because there is going to be another meeting, unfortunately. There's going to be a fourth one. It has to be. So I, I think we need to move on because I don't think we're going to resolve it.
Are you okay with meeting? Are you okay with what he proposed?
I, I'm fine with meeting. I would like to have the things that everybody agrees are supposed to be happening, happen. That seems to still be vague from staff. So now all of the elected officials are saying, this is within the commission's authority. And then we have staff saying, well, I don't know if I'm comfortable with that or we'll have a conversation about that. You don't have the authority to usurp what, what is in the ordinance. Everybody agrees this is the authority of the commission. Stop blocking it. That's, I mean, it's not, none of this stuff is complex.
Well, let's get together and make sure that we're in agreement on what the issues are.
The issues have been outlined.
I don't think we're in total agreement on that, but we're pretty, we've got some concerns, absolutely.
I would like confirmation here today before we leave that the commission's authority is not going to be usurped further. We decide salaries.
I think we need to get together and have a discussion with City Attorney because he just brought that.
I need counsel action.
He just brought that concern forward, so let's, let's clarify that and get an answer to that.
I did not just bring that forward. That's been going on for months and your staff has said that we do. So either they're lying, which if they are, then they should be fired.
So no decisions are made, or?
We don't, we're not trying to make decisions. This was a question that was brought forth before. I think council can provide direction. It's an open meeting and the council can generally say, here's the direction. From where I'm sitting, I feel like we've had this discussion already and council tried to provide direction. I don't recall there being much objection from council, maybe one elected official at the last meetings on whether or not it was within her authority to set salaries. So I fully agree that there's portions of the ordinances or codes that aren't crystal clear. I mean, there's a reason why we sat for an hour prior to this meeting with me going through the council rules and we didn't finish because I'm trying to avoid those sections where one person will say, this is what it means, and another person will say, well, no, I, I interpret it this way. Crystal clear. We obviously need to go back and examine some of our codes and fix that. Some of them are super old. But in the moment, I mean, at the last meeting we were here, I don't recall anyone saying, strongly objecting to the fact that she should set her salaries. And I thought that was the direction that Alderman Dalton was trying to give and was told he couldn't, which is why I said if it's going to require a motion, so be it. Subsequently, there was discussions where perhaps a motion isn't necessary because in past, it's my understanding that council would provide direction, correct? Consensus, obviously, there's court cases that, you know, Dylan B. Downpour that understand consensus, consensus is enough. So I totally understand from her leaving here, where, where are we at? I mean, if there's changes that need to take place in code ordinance, that's something we can work on later, but right now I'm hearing there's one or two positions that, one at least that salary needs to be set by her and need to be posted. What needs to take place for that to happen? And I am sorry, Alderman Kelly, going to come back because I'm not going to walk away until this issue is resolved and out of sight, out of mind, and I'm refusing to let this one be out of mind. Unfortunately, we have to be here.
Being one of the persons that feel like part of the retaliation and bullying, that's just how I feel. So no, it's not that I don't want to come back, but it's just like we're having the same conversation. And when you hear, no disrespect to you gentlemen, but when you guys say, like I said to him, I'm not okay with that. When you say it was shot down, it wasn't shot down. We don't feel like we were heard with what the information we're asking you. So I'm just saying, if I have to be cognizant of my words, listen to the things that you guys say and then you, you instantly say, well, that's not what I meant. Okay, but that's how I took it. So, and I laid out who I am, what I am, which is an everyday thing for me. I will never get a chance to, the only reason I get to blend in here is because I was elected here. If I wasn't elected here, I wouldn't be blending in. Who would be listening to me? Nobody, really? Nobody would be listening to me. They'd be like, oh, there he goes again, spot on fifth floor. Oh, God, there's that Kelly from fifth floor. You know that. You know that. So I'm just saying, the respect and dignity that you guys want, start giving it. Start giving it. Because if not Samuel Jackson, Bernie Mac, I'm gonna show up at every event because the disrespect is ridiculous. Disrespect is ridiculous. It's bad. It's bad. And then the first thing is, that's not what I meant. Okay, so disregard me and my feelings. Because if I have to think of you and yours, so I'm just saying, I don't feel that for the commission and that's why I never felt comfortable giving the examples that I knew because I'm sitting in a meeting, I'm being observed and I, that's not my, it's hard because it's hard enough that you have to speak up for these constituents, but how do I speak up for a department? Because if that's the case, you should hear all the departments that call me on a regular basis. Public Works, I get calls every day. The bus system, I get calls every day. There are so many departments that reach out to me and I go, I don't know what to tell you because those people don't work for me. I, I can tell you where to go, but then I've had a director tell somebody, Alderman Kelly doesn't, and I was at the person's house and I was like, you know, they heard you because you came out of my vehicle. So no, they're not comfortable now coming forward with their complaint. So when I tell you, I've seen both sides of this where this is a director and I've seen a front-line bus driver or a front-line garbage person, they don't feel comfortable bringing complaints towards the city because it's like, why bother? That's what they do. They quit. Why, why quit a good job just because nobody's looking out and working for you? So I, I don't know. I'm confused and I will be at the fourth meeting. Be gradually.
We counted one from last year, right?
Be gradually, I will be there.
I have two real quick questions. I know that we had talked about training for all city staff, like workplace culture, civil rights. Have we looked into that?
Just preliminarily, yes.
Okay. That was one of the competencies that we asked you to attend. Okay.
And you know we need more than a diversity training. You know we need cultural competency, right?
There was very explicit training that, that was requested, so we're looking into that, yes.
No, but I'm saying, do you know the difference between cultural competency, Doug, and diversity is what I'm asking?
Well, I think I do. I'll probably get corrected when I see that, I guess.
Well, diversity is one, two, three, four, five, six white men sitting at a table. These are all diverse white men because you all come from different backgrounds. So I love that they throw that word diversity out there. So whether you guys realize that or not, you guys are all white men that come from, and then we have one, two different heterosexual white women that come from diverse backgrounds. Cultural competency is, I'm a black gay male. There's Africans in the room. Jasmine, where are you from, spirit? We have someone from Mexico. So do you see what I'm saying? So you can't say diversity and then want to pinpoint the city of Davenport because we now need to be in a realm of where we're culturally competent of the people that we serve as constituents for the city of Davenport. And I know y'all think all I do is cuss, but I read and I do understand. So that's what I'm trying to explain to you. Don't come at me and talk about some diversity training because I just gave you one, two, three, four, five, six white males from diverse, Sam, seven, Dale, eight, Robert, Dennis. You know what I'm saying? So no, we have to delve deeper than that. We have to because we're going to try to change something. That's all.
Can we get together with her? I hope so.
I'd have confirmation.
She requested confirmation.
And don't do it without a council person.
She requested confirmation regarding the salary being set by her so that that can be posted. She requested confirmation regarding the salary being set by her so that that can be posted.
I think we're going to discuss that at the meeting to make sure that we're on the same page.
Do we need to have, or is there a vessel for, again, if there's some council directive, I guess, is there a way for us as a body to get together? Because I'm hearing a lot of like-minded thoughts here, so. I mean, I, I guess what I'm saying is, if, if we have a direction, and obviously, you know, there's going to be a legal opinion to this, right? And that's where Corporate Counsel Huff is kind of coming in, and I think the road bump I hear is kind of coming from, but.
But he has to take into consideration the statements that have already made official statements by the city of Davenport.
Correct, correct, but, but we also give a council direction to our city administrator and our corporation counsel, right? And if it's the blessing, the prerogative, whatever of the city council that, hey, we want the Civil Rights Commission to have that authority to do it. They've been saying we need to hire these people. Get them hired, right? Is there a vessel for us to kind of come together as a body to do something like that? What does that look like, I guess is my question.
We need to, we need to work to find a way to unwind the union participation in this so that that can happen.
Okay.
We've got two positions that are covered by the union, I'm aware of.
My concern is basically what I'm hearing today is that the city's going to take a different position than what it has already taken before at other tribunals.
Multiple times.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Right. That's what I'm hearing.
Because that's concerning. That's what's taking place.
And this is why you're being sued.
Why don't we get together and come to agreement on what that position is?
But I don't think that that's your decision. I think it's council's decision.
Well, I'm following the advice of my city attorney.
The city attorney's decision. It's the council's decision. Everybody here is in agreement that this is within the commission's authority. Why is city staff trying to take control over the commission? You don't have that control. This is the commission's decision-making. I don't understand, and why are we accepting it? This has been ongoing. This is nonsensical.
What I, what I, what I heard was there, what I was hearing here was there was a disconnect, and that may be something when you meet that needs to be resolved. But there is, if I could, if I could finish, that the ordinance contradicts, so the, the ordinance contradicts the admin policy. And that needs to, that's a legal issue that may need to be resolved. I don't know.
But an ordinance trumps policy. And council did not set the current administrative policies.
Is there something that we can do right now that would allow her to do what she wants to do? Is there something we can do right now, tonight?
Yes, you can tell them.
Well, I'm asking that question. And I think all my colleagues are asking the same question. It boils down to, can we do it tonight?
But we can ask in the same way.
So.
Question's not on whether or not.
If it's council, yeah.
It's direction, and I think the question.
If council giving direction that, for staff to make sure that her positions can get posted at the salary range she wants to, that is heard and we, we can do it, I, there may be additional steps other than just pushing certain, that's. If we have a CBA agreement that governs this, I have to have a chance to look at the CBA agreement and make sure it's okay. Whether or not, I mean, that, that agreement's in place. And so the union could have grievances if we do something unilateral. I just need that ability to make sure it has become intertwined and we, and it has to be resolved. I, I support being able to set her salaries. I just don't want to get us in a grievance fight with the union if we can avoid it.
I don't think anyone would dispute that.
Just give them a chance to look at it.
But we sat here at a previous meeting and that was never brought forth as an issue. So, and I know we keep kicking the can down the road and it's, I'm almost as frustrated as Director Lacy at this point in time. So I, I want it, and we need to find a resolution. And I fully understand that absolutely that needs to be looked at. Can we, no, have an answer within the week?
Yeah, instead of three, four weeks to a month, can we do that?
This was supposed to be answered on May 9th. This was the question. This was the first question on the list. Why it was supposed to be in collective bargaining? The fact that your staff didn't. I mean, where is the disconnect here? I don't understand. And even the position that's not a union position, I haven't been allowed to set salaries. So what's the issue with that one? Where is the block there?
So I don't, I don't see a block there.
I guess the question then remains for CA. Is the direction provided by council sufficient, or do you require a motion?
I think it's sufficient. We just need to find an avenue to get there.
That answers my question.
All right.
Okay.
We should, by the end of the week?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you get by the end of the week?
I think I should be able to get something before the end of the week.
So Friday.
Yes.
Not Friday at 3:30.
Yes.